Please join me for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have three items on our consent agenda. You probably saw the email that Andy sent out about the water leak at Scotts Mills and the ceiling above the computer room. The computers are all shot, the phone lines are down, the internet's down, so that has to be repaired. Scotts Mills won't have school tomorrow, but that's the item on our consent agenda is an emergency, declaration of emergency out there so we can get that stuff taken care of as soon as possible.
So I move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Who should I give to the second?
Erv or Julie, one or the other. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you. Student reps, Acacia and Valeria Vasquez is here tonight instead of Macy. Good to see you guys come out on a cold night.
Hey, you're not the Lou.
Okay, so for sports, first we have football. Football season has sadly come to an end, but before it did, the team played two great games. The first game was for the quarterfinals at Springfield on November 15th, and we won that game 35 to 3 and moved on to semifinals. And then the semifinals game was played at the Hillsborough Stadium against West Albany. And our boys worked hard, but they lost 117, ending the football season. And overall, we won 10 games this season and lost only two, and we're ranked sixth in the 5A league. For basketball, basketball season's just starting. Tomorrow, there are varsity, junior varsity, and freshman boys' non-lead games against Sherwood at the high school. And non-lead games will continue until January when the league games start. The girls' basketball, varsity, junior varsity, and freshman teams will be traveling to Sherwood tomorrow for non-lead games. And the junior varsity and freshman games will start at 5:30, the varsity games will start at 7:00 at both Silverton High School and Sherwood for both girls' and boys' teams. And the girls' league games also start in January. For swimming, swimming practices just started. Their first meet's tomorrow at 4:00 at the Silverton Pool. Wrestling practice started and wrestling matches will begin in January, and the cheerleading team is continuing to just cheer at games and assemblies.
Okay, for clubs, ASB has just finished fundraising for Coin Drive Week at the high school, and all proceeds for this event are going to Tree of Giving. This year, we raised over $5,500, which is 500 more than our total last year and 1,500 more than our goal. And a big thank you to everyone who made this fundraiser a success, and we still have our incentives assembly coming up and winter week. Key Club is helping decorate a tree for Tree of Giving. They're also setting up a tree in O'Brien's Cafeteria on Otter Street with free ornaments with a jar for donations, and that's a fundraiser for their March District Convention. NHS is wrapping toys and clothes for Tree of Giving. They are also going to help up at the Silver Falls Holiday Festival and at the Silverton Together Holiday Celebration, and those are the 14th and the 15th. Theater has a show coming up this weekend called Steel Magnolias. It is student-directed by Savannah Shuey, and will be performed December 12th, 13th, and 14th. Tickets are $1 for students and $5 for adults. On the Thursday show, all proceeds will go to SACCA, and the show starts at 7:00 PM. FBLA is run by a new advisor this year, Trish Conlin. FBLA just finished serving at the Purple Balls for the elf quilts, and will be reading books to the kids at Eugene Field. Interact is run by John Mannion and is planning for upcoming events and projects. FFA is run by Scott Towery and Sarah McArthur, and they are selling Christmas trees at Wilco, and they just got done selling these. Speech just participated in its tournament, which is hosted at Plaquemines Community College, and Julie Goland finished in, finaled in radio and prose. Construction and Auto is working on individual projects and is learning new techniques. Band is preparing for their winter concert on December 18th. Choir, which is run by Jennifer Kircher, is also preparing for their winter concert, which is on Thursday, December 19th. Concert Choir at Corales has also been given the opportunity to perform at the Willamette Masters Chorus at Willamette University on December 13th, 14th, and 15th. Also, all of the choirs would like to give a big thank you to everyone who supported the department in getting new risers.
Very good. Questions? I have one. I did hear that if you raised a certain amount in the coin drive, that Mr. Hannan had to dress up like a duck.
Yeah.
Has that happened yet, or is that going to?
He's gonna do that tomorrow, I think. We're having our incentives assembly tomorrow, and the boys' football team has to do a ballet dance.
Oh, wow. That would be funny.
Yeah, it's gonna be fun.
So Hannan dresses up tomorrow?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It's good to know that.
And Pharaoh's tan, and Mrs. Roth is tan.
Mrs. Emmert?
Yeah, and Mr. Mackelfresh.
Are you doing water, Mrs. Emmert?
They're getting like really dark spray tans.
Oh, they are?
They're like colors.
And this is all tomorrow during the assembly?
I think so.
Oh, how fun.
What time is the assembly?
It's like 8:00.
8:00, so 10:30.
In the 10:30 in the morning?
Yeah.
So does he have to be a duck all day, or just go to 30:00 all day?
Poor guy.
I heard he was having a real problem with doing that.
I would too.
Might have to stop by tomorrow.
This'd be a videotape.
Assembly at 10:30, okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
Let's post that online.
Yeah, that's one for the books. Okay, Heather, anything else? Okay, good job, girls. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'd like to open it up for our first audience with visitors. Would anybody like to address the board tonight? No one. Moving on to discussion items, 2012-13 financial audit was in our packet.
Yes.
Scott, would you like to just take this one?
You bet. I'd like to draw your attention, first of all, the audit, the whole audit process went very smoothly, and also they issued a fully clean opinion. I'd like to draw your attention first to the communication to the governing body, which is on the inside of your packet, and what my advice is to obviously review the entire audit at your leisure, and if you've done so already and have some specific questions, please let me know what those are. I'd be happy to answer them either tonight, or if you come across some questions later on, I'd be happy to answer those too. But in the letter, the manager, or the communication in the governing body, the results of the audit in the middle of, I guess, page three, that's kind of where the meat is. It was a clean audit with no opinion, with no, a clean opinion with no reservations. There was no exceptions or issues requiring comment for minimum standards, and there was no issues of non-compliance or question costs on the federal financial assistance area. So those are the three main areas of the audit that they look at, and we passed the client colors there. Also, the next section, audit findings, we noted no significant deficiencies during the audit, and there's a, they made a comment on the proactive relationship to management. I'd like to compliment Jan on that. She really led the lion's charge on this audit. I just kind of watched, but she and the auditors have a very strong relationship, and it's a very proactive relationship. She knew exactly where all the answers were to all of their questions, and I spent a lot of time taking notes, but it was very impressive.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, are you ready to do it next year?
You know, I think I am, actually, but it really is all due to Jan's groundwork on that. She's done an amazing job over the years, and it's very refreshing to jump into a situation where things are going smooth. It's really nice, so I'm very appreciative of that. Along the lines, in the financial section, I'd like to draw your attention to a couple of pages. First, on page I, it's probably about six or seven pages in, that's the management discussion and analysis. That's a letter that I put together, Andy oversees that, and we kind of put that together. We actually write that part in for your information. You'll notice in the financial highlights, I wanted to talk a little bit about the net position decrease of 4 million, 4.1 million. That was primarily due to a 4.8 million book loss that occurred during the refunding of the general obligation bonds. While those particular numbers look really scary, it's not much to be really concerned about. Because we refunded some general obligation bonds, our overall cost of the district has gone down because we got a better rate on those GO bonds. And that, rest of that paragraph kind of explains that, and I won't go into all of that. But if it wasn't for us refunding those bonds, our net position, which is our overall, that includes assets and liabilities and the balance sheet, would have increased by $749,000. So our financial situation is real solid regardless of that particular one book loss. The next line below is something that I wanted to highlight too. The governmental funds report combined an ending fund balance of $5.7 million, which is a decrease of $832,000 in comparison to the prior year. That's more of a cash type of position, and that is a reflection of the board's conscious decision to kind of spend some of those reserve dollars and get those reserves down to a little bit more appropriate level. You know, districts across the state obviously were hit very hard in the 2012-13 fiscal year, and I think the board made the right decision to spend some of those reserves to keep those programs going to the level that they did. So even though there is a decrease in that ending fund balance, it decreased to what I would consider more appropriate, and certainly what you guys had decided as a board to get to. So I just wanted to kind of compliment, but also highlight that. Then there's some pages in general, if you wanted to kind of get, again, a real brief overview. Page V highlights that change in net position. You can kind of read about how this fiscal year ended, or last fiscal year ended with the 2012 fiscal year, how it compared. And then, I'm a big believer in kind of looking at fund balance and cash. I think that that is more of a quicker, more appropriate way of looking at our financial picture. And so pages seven and 7A show really the fund balance and the revenues and the expenditures for each of our funds that we have. And so that's, and that kind of shows you just a nice overview of the financial picture of our district. And then there's obviously tons of other information in there, including a couple of pages that compare us to budget and those types of things. But if there's not any other specific questions, I think that would be it. But again, my door's always open, and if you have any questions on our financial situation, be it current situation or last year's, I'd be happy to answer those.
Questions for Scott? Okay, thank you very much, Scott. Please pass our thanks along to Jan again for all her work.
I certainly will. She'd like to hear that, I'm sure.
For all her work to get this done in such a good way again. And this is an action item later this evening, so. Moving on, Oregon School Boards Association elections. We have two elections, one for the Board of Directors, Mr. Beeson, our own, Mr. Beeson is running for that position again, and we just want to thank, tell David thank you for all, for what you do with OSBA. It benefits us, and it's a benefit for the state, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
If you get elected again.
We hope.
Yeah. And then there's also an election for the Legislative Policy Committee, one person running for that, and then a resolution number one. David, would you want to chime in on any of these? Like the resolution maybe?
The resolution, I'd be happy to speak to that. Just in general, it's fairly detailed, but in general, what it is, is we're asking membership to approve some changes to the constitution that address some irregularities or some deficiencies in sort of the timing of elections for OSBA Board of Directors. And when we, some of you may remember that a number of years ago, we revised the governance of the association. It used to be that each elected board member had a vote, and we changed that so that boards of directors, who are really the constituents of Oregon School Boards Association, each have one vote in elections for Board of Directors members, for LPC, Legislative Policy Committee, and for other issues like constitutional changes. So when we did that, we realized that there were going to be some glitches in the process and the timing of the process, especially with elections for board members and LPC, and so this just corrects some of those things after we've had a few years of experience and kind of gone around the cycle a number of times. So, okay? So it's fairly simple, nothing radical.
Yeah, didn't look like it to me. Any discussion on this, these three items?
I'd just say, on Nancy McMorris, I don't know her, but her application, I do have some concerns about what she has in here. She seems to be an advocate to expand the scope of public education in our state, and with that, increase the amount of tax dollars she's seeking to fund some of these programs. That's, to me, is a big concern, and I plan to vote against her.
Okay. So I could just speak to that for a minute. Nancy is the, I think she's currently the chair of the Salem Kaiser Board, and she's served a great deal of time, I believe, on the Salem Kaiser Board. She's been very active. She's served on the LPC before, very active for OSBA, very active in the area. I don't know that her personal values are reflected in her service as much as those of her Board of Directors, which she represents. So I haven't seen her, her personal values really come into play. At the LPC, the Legislative Policy Committee, really, you're there to represent your Board of Directors and the people in the region, which, where she's a member of the Marion Region, which is the same region that I serve, so.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? Okay, just one other, one other reminder, just everybody remember, our work session for this month is going to be next Monday night, the 16th, rather than two weeks, so we can keep it a little further away from the Christmas break. So keep that in your mind, there's some important topics on the agenda for that one. Okay, administrative staff reports. Andy, school and district grant eligibility, inter-district transfer policies, things like that?
I have, yeah, I have three actually brief announcements, too, in addition to the grant eligibility programs, and each of you has received some ongoing updates from me as the year has progressed, probably since midsummer, about our eligibility for a variety of grants, and they really fall in line with the legislative release of dollars from the last session for strategic initiative and strategic investments in schools across the state of Oregon. Many of these grants are competitive in nature, so they require an application. There's at least one that is a non-competitive grant that will be eligible for here very soon. But I just want to run through this list briefly to let you know what they, what they look like and the approximate amount that we've had for each one. We qualified last summer for a professional collaboration grant, it's a partnership between Silver Falls School District and Central School District, about $20,000, and so our share will be about half of that for professional development of teachers, and especially planning and design specific to professional development, teacher evaluation, and other elements actually that fall in within components of Oregon's federal waiver to the No Child Left Behind Act, which were required, or not were required to, but which this, which the state has submitted a waiver. We are also, became eligible for recently a non-competitive Common Core Transition Grant. It's an implementation grant headed up by Linda Myers and Eric Swinson and a team of teachers and administrators, just completed a training in Eugene specific to that grant that'll equate to about $40,000 for this district, again, specific for implementation of professional development in this district. We have been included and been approved for a partnership grant, a mentoring grant, which is actually in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, but because it's been headed up by Salem Kaiser School District, and we've partnered with them in addition to some other school districts, we get a small portion of that to allow each of our new teachers, new to the profession, as well as new administrators new to the profession, mentoring support throughout the year, which is a real bonus in my mind. We have three schools, Scotts Mills, Silverton High School, and Mark Twain, which have qualified for STEM grants specifics to establishment of robotics programs or continuation of robotics programs, in the case of Scotts Mills and the high school. STEM is an acronym for science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, and Marilyn was going to present a little bit on the STEM initiatives in the district tonight, but we'll do that in January when she can be here. But it's really pretty exciting news, and we're actually a member of the South Metro STEM Consortium, so quite a few school districts in the mid and southern Willamette Valley are part of this STEM Consortium, and working closely with Oregon Institute of Technology and others in establishing STEM opportunities, including grant availability for those opportunities in our district. So it's pretty exciting news. Question? We have three schools, Evergreen, Victor Point, Buc Creek, which have qualified for the state PE grant. They have PE teachers at those schools or expanded PE options or opportunities for our kids. And I haven't heard yet, Andy Stevens is out ill today, but I know she had submitted a grant application for CTE revitalization grant, which is similar to what she qualified for two years ago with Mark Twain's program at Silverton High School in collaboration with Mount Angel School District. So uncertain about the status of that grant at this point. And then the big one, this one is a competitive grant that the district is establishing a team to apply and then implement. It's potentially $400,000 to this district alone for the purposes of supporting our employees and career pathways, implementing our teacher evaluation system, the new teacher evaluation system, providing professional release time for our teachers to support them in, on the transition for Common Core proficiency grading, and also, again, as the legislature has asked for additional design specific to teacher compensation, specific to outcomes, student outcomes. Don't know quite where that last one is going to go. I think there's a lot of uncertainty about that. However, it is part of the legislation, and again, could mean up to $400,000 for this district. We hope to know by, we're not quite certain, but mid, maybe toward the end of the year, whether we're eligible for those dollars. So exciting, currently pretty exciting with the amount of grant and money that's available for districts, and I'm fortunate that we have a number of administrators who have the energy and the ambition to pursue some of those dollars, either individually or us as a team. And, you know, if we don't apply for them, we don't, we don't get them. So that's a quick update on grants. Before I go on to the next topic, are there any questions on this?
Yeah, I appreciate the staff and their work towards this as well. Can you, can you speak on where the source of the funds are coming from? Is it federal's?
No, they're state dollars, been freed up by the last legislative session, while a, specific to part of the governor's 40-40-20 goal objectives, freeing up dollars for strategic investment in schools in order to meet those goals and also to meet the requirements of the federal waiver from NCL, is my understanding.
Who administrates it?
ODE, many of these.
Okay. Thanks.
Then, second to that is, is, this is an announcement, and David may want to chime into this one as well, but each of you will receive more information specific to an activity coming up on February 25th in Mount Angel at St. Mary's Church. It's a, actually, it's titled a poverty simulation, and it's being established and coordinated by multiple local groups in the area, city of Mount Angel, SACCA, Scott, city of Scotts Mills, religious organizations, Silverton Health Hospital, et cetera, putting together this opportunity for about six hours, I believe, during the day, to literally put those involved through a opportunity to experience poverty firsthand. And admittedly, it's all through simulated activities and so forth, but well orchestrated, is my understanding. I've never experienced it, but I see this as an opportunity for us as a, as a district to be not only an active participant, but to give us as educators, administrators, you as school board members, an opportunity to experience that. And from my understanding, it really does create an awareness that sometimes a little bit difficult for us, especially those of us who have our needs met, to be able to access sort of the, I think, the real effect that poverty has personally and individually of many of our kids and adults in our community. So again, February 25th, additional information will be sent to you as we, as we kind of sort those plans out. David, I know you're part of the committee, and...
I think that you covered it really well. I think the purpose of it is to sort of help individuals understand what it's like to be poor and to break down sort of the myths that surround that in many people's minds. You know, people have preconceptions that people are, who are poor are poor because they're lazy, they're poor because they're stupid, they're, you know, it's easy to be poor. There are all kinds of things going on with that. And what it does is it simulates how it would be to live in poverty and the hard choices that you have to make on a daily basis or even an hourly basis sometimes with such limited resources. The ultimate goal of it is to help people to understand that so that people who are economically disadvantaged are treated with the same respect that everyone else receives, particularly those of us who are better off. So we can talk more about this in the future as the program progresses, but we're certainly happy to have Andy join the steering committee and add his intelligence and his energy to our efforts, so.
Happy to help. Thanks, Stephen. And then last, it's not on your agenda either, but it's, I just attended the school law conference in Eugene last week, and while there were multiple topics of, I think of timely topics for consideration and reminders for us as administrators or educators for that matter. One of them will require some additional information as we get a little closer to its implementation, and that's the House Bill 2747, and it is the inter-district transfer legislation from the last session. And while there will continue to be the option of inter-district transfers, in other words, transfers between school districts with students, some of the rules around that, especially the processes around that, are becoming a little bit tighter based upon this new legislation. Now, I'm putting it out there as an awareness at this point because there's still some interpretive information that ODE will be providing, and OSBA will be chiming in this with this as well. But generally speaking, the transfers will continue, but our, our current system, which allows for approval of transfers from other districts based upon students' academic achievement, attendance, behavior, will no longer be options for consideration. In other words, the attendance, excuse me, their approval for transfers in this district need to be based solely upon whether we have room and whether the student has any history or is currently an expelled student from another district. Those are really the only two elements that can be used. Once the student is accepted, the school district then can ask additional questions like, is a child on an IEP? Have there been behavioral issues at previous schools and so forth? And I'm going to editorialize here a little bit, but I believe this is coming as a result of additional, and I think will be continued conversation at the legislative level, really heading us down the road more and more and more toward open enrollment across the district with relatively few restrictions. That's just my sense. And a person could even say right now that the inter-district transfer legislation, if you put it side by side by your, the open enrollment legislation that was approved two sessions ago, they actually look very similar. But there are some differences in sort of in the devil in the details related to funding for special education students. In addition, we still have the option as a district, once we select students or elect to have them in our district, their transfers can be revoked, according to information we've received at this point, based upon their behavior or attendance, similar to what we do now if we have students who are not performing well. The ODE is refining some rulings specific to this because there's also some question about selection of students. In other words, that needs to occur in a random fashion rather than first come, first served. There's some questions being raised about that. I don't have the answer to that at this point. Similarly, there's also some questions about our inter-district transfers related to you as a board designating a maximum number that you allow in your district to come into your district and designating the number of students that are actually allowed to leave your district. So it's really taking... So it's really taking this current status, which is in my mind also been fairly flexible and fairly doable over the years and it's tightening it up. So there's a little bit more control about what the system looks like in the district. I don't necessarily think it's the best answer in every circumstance because I'm convinced that we have a system that's working fairly effectively right now. But when it's state law, there's not a heck of a lot that's within our control when it comes to that. We need to meet the definition of law. So the interpretation of information still has yet to occur completely by ODE and that should occur, let's say by February, maybe March at the latest. This will be implemented in the 2014, 15. Just creating an awareness on your part, so more information to come. Wally, I know you asked about that recently.
Yeah, I'm very interested. Heard a few things. So what I heard you say then is we don't have much of a choice about allowing kids in if we choose to accept children from outside the district.
Correct.
But once they're here, we'd have the power to send them on their way if they met some type of criteria.
Correct, which is current practice.
Okay. And does this affect, do the changes affect the students we already have?
That's one of the unknowns.
Okay.
Is, do we grandfather those students in? The students are existing in the district. What does that look like? Because if we have to select on a, you know, in some kind of equitable basis, who comes into our district? What do we say with the students who have been transfer students in our district for the last five or seven or eight years? So ODE still has to provide a ruling on that.
Okay. Questions for Andy?
Lots to chew on.
Yeah, thank you, Andy.
Nothing to answer.
Yeah. Scott, financial report.
All right. Well, your financial report, not a lot of things that jump right out at me. You may see on the front page, on the budget remaining, your cash basis, you might see that the general fund revenue has shot up quite a bit. It's November, so we picked up the first, the largest portion of property tax revenue that we'll receive. We don't typically get very much property tax revenue until November and then we'll get some for those that pay on thirds. We'll get some of the thirds in the next three months and then six months down the road. Overall, on your budget remaining cash basis, if you look at your total revenue of 26 million in the door compared to your total expenditures, 10, almost 11 million out the door, you're in a very good positive cash flow experience. That's where you want to be. Page two, your balance sheet. The only highlight there, when I first saw this particular report, seven months ago, I think, when I visited you at a board meeting, I saw that the checking account had a negative number on that. It concerned me at first, but really how we present this, since this is a balance sheet, that is just an extension of the fact that we hadn't transferred any money back into that account as of the time when we made the report, the balance sheet as of November 30th. So we weren't overdrawn, we're never overdrawn. Knock on wood, we worked really hard to make sure that we're that way. It's just that we had probably a check run that went out the day prior and the checks were probably still sitting on my desk before we had transferred the money in to cover those checks. So it's not to worry if you see a negative number in that top part in that balance sheet. And then similarly, in the summary by cash funds, that 200 fund has a negative amount there. And what that reflects is a lot of our grants, and we put all of our grants into that particular fund, some of those grants are reimbursement grants. One of the grants that Andy alluded to, the PE grant, is a reimbursement grant as well. So we will expend those monies well before we get those replaced. And so that's why you will likely see that be a negative number, probably around that amount for the foreseeable future, almost until June. So again, not to be alarmed by that, but if you see that getting really too big or if you have any questions about that, again, don't hesitate to ask, but just kind of fair warning there. Page three is the general operating fund and this is where we break it out by the district and the particular schools. You'll notice that most of the revenue, again, we're in good shape. We have the expenditures, excuse me, in the top part are around 73% of the, we have 73% or so of the budget remaining. And then down below for the different schools, we'll have 60 to 70% of the budget remaining there. So we're in really good shape.
So I do have a question on this one.
You bet.
Under Prado, it seems like their spending's kind of ahead of the other district schools, outside of the charter schools.
Yeah.
Is there a reason behind that?
I don't have a reason off the top of my head. I'll have to check into that before I get back to you if you don't mind.
Sure.
I'll make a point of that and I'll just reply to everyone. There hasn't been anything that's really jumped out at me in terms of major purchases or anything, but it could be an issue where we have, you know, a staff member or something that is costing more money than we'd expected. Actually, it wouldn't come out of that section, but let me do some research on that before I. Finally, on the revenue and expenditure summary with cash flow on the backside, you can see there that $4 million figure in November, that's truncated, the source is truncated. It's too bad that that first line is current year property tax revenue. So you'll see that we got our first installment of $4.4 million there. And then also, we kind of got a nice little spike there in the prior year's taxes. So, you know, I always like looking at those numbers because if those numbers are coming in at or better than we had budgeted for, that's a good sign for our economy and in my opinion. So that's a good sign for us. But again, positive cash flow situation and that's all fun. Any questions at all?
Okay, thank you, Scott. Kevin Palmer, Buick Creek.
All right, good evening. Start with the top part of the report here that you have. I'm very happy to report enrollment wise, we're back up to 310 students, which this time last year, we were 281. So we bounced back and that's making us very happy. It's where we should be, is 310, 315. So that's good for our school.
Is that due to move-ins or transfers or?
A lot of transfers, some move-ins. And then the previous year, part of the cause of that drop down was we graduated an enormous eighth grade class for us and brought in an average kindergarten class. That right there accounted for about 20 to 22 students just in itself, then when a few families moved away. So this year, we were very intentional about putting word out basically for grade levels that we had room for and that drew response. So we were able to fill up some of the grade levels that we had space in. So that helped us out. We welcome three new staff members this year, Sierra Kester for primary grade PE, behavior specialist John Harrington, who was with us nine years ago, my first year at Buick Creek and then left the district and now is back and we're very happy about that. And special needs assistant Kara Zitzelberger. And we also have two student teachers from Western right now. And then you'll see some other facts, information, math night, Christmas program coming up, Lego and Vex robotics and AKA science programs. We have 1,155 volunteer hours through today and our attendance rate is at a really nice 95.6%, which exceeds our school goal of 95%. So we'll go down to academic programs. And if you would turn to the backside of your report, down there in the middle, I want to show you all, this is 2012 to 13 on purpose, basically information from last year and how we finished out in reading, math and writing compared to the spring of 2012, then to the spring of 2013. We're a school-wide title program, which means we have very specific goals as part of our school-wide improvement plan. And our goal in reading was to get up to an 80%, meet or exceed level in third through eighth grade reading by spring of 2013, going up from 72%. The previous year, we didn't quite make that goal. As you can see, we ended up at 75%, but still a nice increase and going in the right direction. Our goal for 2014 or the end of this year is still 80%. In math, we made significant growth. The previous year, we had 57% meets or exceeds. Our goal was 75%. We made it up to 70. We didn't make the goal, but we made great progress toward it. We kept that goal at 75% for this coming school year, the one we're in right now. And writing for grades four through eight, we had 51% meets or exceeds in 2011 and 12. Our goal was 56%. We call for a five percentage point increase in writing each year. We made nine percentage points increase up to 60%. And so we've changed that goal to 65% for the current school year. So we don't always make the goals that we set, but we make progress toward them and that's very important. We see that as very significant. I would like to point out some great progress our eighth graders made, last year's eighth graders, so these kids are freshmen this year at the high school. Their writing scores in 2011 to 12, when they were seventh graders, 38% of them passed the district's writing assessment. As eighth graders, 85%.
Wow.
Passed. Huge growth.
How'd you guys make those gains, Kevin?
Our middle school team, so we have our PLC times at the school level, our middle school team has for three or four years now focused on writing across the curriculum. That's about all they can focus on as a team because we have one science teacher, one math teacher, language arts teacher, you know, everybody's their department. And so writing is what they all have in common and they have worked very, very hard, scoring papers, working on conventions. They have a narrow focus each year, they change it a little bit and adapt it and it's paid off. It's clearly paid off in how these kids are writing. And that eighth grade class from last year, I think is a great example of that. So a significant difference. And in math, same thing. As seventh graders, 56% of these kids met or exceeded their Oaks math. And as eighth graders, 85%. And I put a lot of the effort and a lot of the reasoning behind that for our math lab that we started last year, double dosing those kids that needed it for 90 minutes of math a day instead of 45 minutes of math per day. So it's just right there.
That's great.
And they make great growth and so they're very proud of it too. We made that a big deal at graduation at the ceremony and you could tell their pride in what they did. I also wanted to point out something that doesn't get pointed out very often, that's the Oaks Social Studies test. It's not a required test state, but it's there and Buick Creek always does it. And John Atwell, before him, and now Garret Lamro take great pride in how their kids do on the Oaks Social Studies test. And just a shout out to our fifth graders, it's just a fifth and eighth grade test, 100% of the fifth graders at Buick Creek last year passed the Oaks Social Studies test and 96% of the eighth graders did. And those kids took a lot of pride in doing that too. They had two attempts and if they didn't pass the first time, they worked really hard to pass it the second time.
That's great.
Good for them. Andy mentioned the physical education expansion grant from ODE. We had to eliminate our music program going into this year. It was a budget deal. And so over the summer, and Linda Brown sent that information out to all the principals. So thank you for that. And we applied for it out at Buick Creek. We asked for a .75, enough funding for a .75 position, hired Sierra Kester, who you might know as Sierra Rysdan when she went to Silverton High School. And so she teaches PE to K4 and Jeff Seiler teaches it to 4A. They team up together with our large fourth grade class. There's two separate classrooms. So every kid at Buick Creek gets PE every day of the week. Kinder in first grade get it for 30 minutes every day and everybody else gets it for 45. And so requirements call for 150 minutes a week for K5 for a PE. And so most of those kids are getting 225 minutes a week. Then middle schools needs to be 225 and that's what they get. So that's turned out to be fantastic. Our only challenge is space and so we've worked with that. We're putting cafeteria tables up and taking them down quite often, but we're making it work and the kids are loving it and so are the teachers.
So just a quick question about that.
Yes.
I already think I probably know the answer to this, but I'd like to hear from you. Do you observe real improvement in behavior and basically, you know, focus in studying and performance academically since you have PE?
Yes, and that was a topic at our last site council meeting. We had several teachers, of course, on our site council. We have Jeff and Sierra come scheduled for periodic site council meeting attendance throughout the year as part of the grant. And we have goals that we have to meet and track throughout the year, but that was the topic of discussion when they were there. In our most recent site council meeting was we wanted to hear from the teachers and they noticed a huge difference in the kids, again, they get that energy out, they're more focused in class, they feel, it's all anecdotal, but that's what they're telling us, the teachers. And so I believe it.
Anecdotal is what we used to call common sense, you know, so.
No argument. Yeah, so it's making a difference, a big difference.
Yeah, thank you.
It's great to have them, you're welcome. Our summer experience, summer school, we had it in 2011, we didn't have it in 2012. We were able to pay for it last year or this past summer. And at this time last year, I shared with you a very colorful chart that our Title I teacher, Libby Fosha, had put together that showed really a clear, significant difference in how kids performed between the spring and fall when they did have summer school and when they didn't have summer school. Just more kids doing better with summer school for three weeks, weeks right before school started. And if the same kids that didn't have it, they dropped. They lost their skills over the summer, it took them longer to gain them. So she put together, these are kids, kind of an intact group here from the spring to fall of 2012, spring of 2013 to fall of 2013 and what the changes were. And so kind of right in the middle, the middle gray sheet, you see a lot of blue negative numbers and that's not what you expect to see after summer school. We expect to see more positive numbers. But the reason you have some, two sets of data, from fall of 2013 to November of 2013, our title, room assessed kids when they first started this school year using more difficult nonfiction read, and these are words correct per minute that you see is what these numbers stand for. And so we didn't see that instant growth because the read was more difficult, it was a different type, but you do see the numbers change. You go from the fall, right away at the start of school year to November, to the second time they did an all-school check. And so if you look at the far right side, there's only seven blue numbers and you're bound to see some of those. I mean, just, you know, kids are all different, but way more red numbers and those represent growth. And all the way down to the bottom, percent of increase, 69% of the kids that were able to attend summer school this year. And so we see that as significant. And just some facts about our summer school. We offered it August 5th through 22nd, 12 total days, we had 37 kids there per day. On average, 93% attendance for the whole session and 20 kids that were there every single day. And along with that, they get breakfast and lunch too, which you can't beat. So, and transportation to and from the school. So it is great to be able to offer that. A Russian class in the fourth year, also on the backside, some figures there. We have as many kids taking Russian class now as we have ever had, 44 kids across all the grade levels. And the really cool thing about what we have going on right now is we have kids representing all of our main ethnic and cultural groups at Buick Creek. We're a very diverse school and there are representatives of all those groups in Russian class. We've got one little girl in there right now that is, basically Russian's going to be her third language if she keeps with it. And she is shot, according to Del Fuzar, instructor, to the top of the class in her section, which is just cool to see. And we've been able to drop the price to the tuition rate based on the Russian dinner and other fundraising efforts. So it's more affordable, we've got more kids taking part in it. So that has been great. We have 34 kids getting mentored, either through staff at Buick Creek or outside adults coming in, for example, from the Mount Angel Abbey Seminary. So those kids get help kind of on a weekly basis. They have an adult they can check in with and get some mentoring and Debbie Scott, our counselor, runs all of that. And we're helping 22 families this year with our holiday food baskets and giving tree. So 22 families in need at Buick Creek, which has been ongoing for years out there. So it's been a great fall so far.
Are there any questions for Kevin?
Good recording. Thank you.
Just one more follow-up on the transfers. Can I go along with what we talked about earlier regarding the new laws coming down?
Yeah, I was interested.
Had the majority of these transfers you brought in, have they been internal, in-district transfers or outside the district?
Yeah, in-district.
Okay.
The majority of them, for sure. Yeah, couple out of district.
Had the Jordies transfers you brought in, or have they been internal, in-district transfers, or outside the district?
Yeah, in-district.
Okay.
The majority of them, for sure, yeah. Couple out of district.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin.
All right, thanks.
Very good.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, Linda Brown, special ed.
Yeah, I wanted, this time instead, really focusing on any of our specific programs, I wanted to kind of give you a glimpse of kind of behind-the-scenes support that we're providing for some of our students. As you know, we serve a variety of kids with a variety of needs, and when you look at my, the top green sheet, I go from, the first thing is having a very strong relationship with the student, all the way down to kids needing support with Salem psychiatric crisis. So, let me just walk you through some of these forms, it's kind of the background of what we do and kind of things in our toolbox. So, when you look at some of the behaviors, our yellow sheet is just an example of some behavior tracking sheets we might work with some of our younger students on, helping them understand what they need to be doing every day, so it's kind of a nice thing for younger kids. The pink form is more of a formalized program, where you're really talking about what the student needs and then the staff needs, so that's a very formalized process. For some of our kids, they just need that level of detail, and the staff that's working with each of those students need to have that level of detail, too. So, a little bit of extra support there. Our blue form really talks about the risk factors of a lot of the students that we're working with, keeping that in mind. It's a difficult time, it's a different time, and our students come from a variety of different environments and experiences, so really making people very aware of that. Moving on to the purple sheet, we have what we call Level One and Level Two Threat Assessments that we do. And for these students, they can be special ed, they could be non-special ed, but there's some significant benefit that's happened that really causes the team to really stop, and we really need to have a very thoughtful approach. So, Level One is a big set of documents that we have here. The process has been refined again this year, so we're asking really, really good questions. Our most vulnerable kids are going to be kids that show up on these Level Ones. A high school does numerous Level Ones throughout the year, but you also see that in all the K-eights, too. So, Level One Threat Assessment is something that's supported through ESD, and we sent some staff people earlier this year to get the Level One training. So, that's a really nice system. Going on to our purple sheet, just a little bit of insight for our school administrators. We really need to have this process to be as thoughtful as it possibly can. You know, we're just dealing with kids that are very volatile, and we really kind of need to be very thoughtful about how we're supporting our students, so the purple sheet's a big help.
You probably don't have this number, but percentage-wise, I mean, what percentage are we looking at?
Of kids doing Threat Level Ones and Twos, there's probably less than ten a year for that.
Ten total?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, and the Threat Assessment really is a good accountability system for us. If we have a concern, or someone has a concern, we just don't want it to go away. We really need to have the documentation saying that, yes, we've thought about this, we've looked at all the different details. And when you go through the Level One, some of the questions are tough, and they just redid it, because this Level One protocol was used with younger kids, and it was used with high school kids. So, they're really trying to synthesize the questions down to a more, kind of leading the team into better discussions about kids. So, the Level One kids, these kids are concerning. These could be the kids that are coming in, talking about bringing a weapon, or hurting somebody else, or hurting themselves. So, you'll see that the Level One, if you go through the protocol, has some really good information in there. Moving on to some of the other information I provided, there is a parent guide or interview process to get input from parents or the foster home, so that's another really important piece. Getting information from the teachers is another important piece, and then getting information from the students. So, really, when you start a Level One, you kind of put your detective hat on, you ask really good questions, you do a lot of really good, careful listening, seeing what the student needs, and really being very thoughtful about that support. So, I think this is a great system for us to really consider some of our students with just complex needs. And throughout the Level One Threat Assessment, we definitely want to work with the student that has some difficulty, but we also need to acknowledge that sometimes there's a victim in these Level One concerns. So, a part of the program is, if you have a student that is a victim, or a staff member that's a victim, that you're working with those individuals, too, putting some support systems in place to help them, too. For those students that go through the Level One, and there's still a variety of needs, you can bump it up to Level Two, and when you do that, you bring mental health to the table, you bring law enforcement to the table. And when you get to Level Two, that's pretty significant. That means that it's a very strong possibility the student might do something at school that would harm themselves or others. So, Level Two's a big deal. Level Two is another way that, kind of a backdoor approach to get mental health. I work with mental health team folks all the time, trying to get help for kids, and sometimes I can't get that, but if we're up to Level Two, we're having those kind of conversations, and you have mental health people at the table, that's really a great way to kind of gather some additional information from students. So, the other information, the kind of the cream-colored page, and this is something the high school does really, really well. We really have great conversations with our kids, and if there's concerns, tell somebody. If you're concerned about your friend, or you hear somebody, something from somebody, let's talk about, talk to a teacher, administrator, just don't put this stuff under the rug, let's have those conversations. And I know at the high school, because they have a great relationship with the kids, they're getting these type of conversations, and so they really can be very thoughtful about our students, in that we're just not going to brush things under the rug, they're important things that we need to deal with. So, keeping that conversation up and going is really important, too. The last couple of sections just talk about Level One and Level Two Threat Assessments. I think last year we had maybe three of these, and when we're at this level, we're very concerned. So, concerned that we need to have the police officers there, mental health there. Kids that are at the Level Two are just really, really volatile, and we just can't ignore this stuff, we need to make sure we're taking care of it. And then, just some of the last packets on here, suicide, I included the whole thing, so you can see kind of the questions we're asking, but if we have staff or students that are saying those type of things, we want to be very thoughtful about that. Unfortunately, we've both had staff and students commit suicide in this district, and it's something, it's difficult to talk about, but we really need to acknowledge that. Let's go back to the green form, I think I've covered about everything.
I have a question. You mentioned victims.
Mm-hmm.
Who are typically the victims? Have we, you immediately think it'd be other students, but are teachers and staff members victims as well?
Yeah, unfortunately, we have students, their actions or words sometimes are toward teachers, toward staff members, and they're definitely victims, and we need to make sure we're providing that support system. So, it really could be either way. Things I've discussed here are special ed and regular ed. If a student gets into the area of special education, especially design instruction, we can always look at other health impaired, we can look at emotionally disturbance. I think the biggest thing through all this is, as administrative team, we have lots of tools in our toolbox, and I think the most important thing we do as a district is, every single student is important, and it's the relationship we're developing with those kids that makes a huge difference. That's a rare thing that a district has, and I think we do that really well, knowing our kids. We just don't put our head in the sand, we talk about it, we support each other, and these tools will help our kids, too. So, just kind of a highlight of how we're trying to support each student. You see the things on TV and the news, we are serving very, very volatile students. We might be small little Silverton, but we have volatile students, the same way that Portland and Salem Kaiser does. So, we try to be very thoughtful about the support, and making sure that each child is important, and, you know, we care, we want the best for them. So, any questions? That's kind of our highlight of the back, behind the scenes.
You have a lot here that's very specific to, you know, the evaluation to threats and everything. For the follow-up for the victims, is there something as intense to follow up with them as well?
Yeah, we have our counselors, our behavior specialists touching base with those individuals, just to make sure everything's all right, talking to the parents, too. So, it's, once you're a victim, it is a process to kind of heal and strengthen after that, too. One of the other things that I've done, within the mental health community in Marion County, they hear from me a lot, and so I have some really great friends in the mental health community, and we've been able to get our behavior specialist and our school sites to attend some of the trainings they have. There are a lot of great information about trauma in younger children, and how that impacts brain development. So, we went to a great workshop last spring, and there's another one this summer, that trauma, when you're a little guy and you're going through this stuff, it really has a long-term impact on your brain development, so I'm trying to get my team into those type of workshops, too, just so we're better prepared to understand our kids.
What about in parent engagement? Do you find support there?
We have a variety. We have some parents that, he's not my kid, not my responsibility, we keep knocking on the door and having those conversations. And then, we also have parents that are so overwhelmed, they have no idea what they're doing. So, each set of parents, each crisis is a totally different thing, but when you look at the list, I talk about Rodney Dean, he's our family support advocate, and he's a great one for connecting families to mental health. He kind of talks the talk and has the language and all the telephone numbers. So, when we have parents that are kind of struggling with that, I hook them up with Rodney. And I guess the last thing I like to do, too, if we have a student that we've gone through special ed, we've done our evaluation, we've done SLP, we've used every tool in our toolbox, and we're still not sure what we need to do, that's when I start doing some psychological evaluations within the mental health. It's kind of our insurance policy that, yes, as a district, we're trying to be very attentive to how to support students, and sometimes the extra information from the mental health community really helps. When I get to the point where we're doing psychological evaluations, we've already shortened the day, we're looking at tutoring, and nothing is working. So, as a district, I feel it's important for us to invest in those kids to have better understanding of their needs. So, that's, thank you.
Questions for Linda? Thank you very much, Linda, thank you for all you do.
Yeah, appreciate the work.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, board reports. Any reports?
A couple of things. Irv, myself, and Tom attended the LEGO Robotics, get this right, what was it, the practice run, basically. We were judges, we were trained to be judges, and we were judges for this event, which was a practice event to help the students who were going to be competing, I think, in the regional LEGO Robotics Program from Scotts Mills. And it was really very interesting and a lot of fun to see how incredibly advanced these youngsters are in the creation of robots and the programs, the software programs for the robots, and in their teamwork, and all of that stuff that goes into a successful robotics experience, I guess. This was brand-new to me. I've heard about it, I had kind of a hazy idea of what it was, and I was really impressed with the kids, with the parents that were supporting them, with the staff that were supporting the whole thing. I mean, it's just an amazing and amazingly creative opportunity for kids. So, do you guys have anything you want to add to this? Mr.?
Well, I was just encouraged how many young girls were involved in this process. I mean, to see, that's something that typically boys would be, you know, interested in, but these girls were just fired up and ready to answer questions, so it was exciting.
Good.
Yeah, it was great. One of the neat things about it was seeing the kids at a young age learn to present in front of adults. The sooner you do that and get that nervous, get through that nervousness barrier was fantastic.
Good.
It was a good start.
I think that was one of the really neat things about this. I guess I didn't, kind of didn't articulate all the facets of this, but it's about teamwork, it's about making a formal presentation before a group of real judges and the public, who might be in attendance. There are just so many different facets beyond, you know, actually building a working robot, designing and building on your own, and then creating the software program for it, and having it actually do what it's supposed to do, which is a real challenge. I don't think I could do this, you know, like I said, I was just kind of in awe of the whole thing, but it's very neat, very neat experience. So, the other thing I wanted to mention, Andy mentioned the school law conference. This is a great conference that's kind of unheralded in the board member realm, and I would really encourage board members in the future to take the opportunity to go to Eugene. It's very low-key, you have really some very high-quality presenters there, and it's not expensive. I mean, you could go down for the day and avoid the hotel room charges, and really get a lot of information, learn a lot, and come home refreshed, and having a whole new set of knowledge, new knowledge or old knowledge. We had a couple of presenters that were really timely, and that we could probably discuss at a work session sometime. They focused on school violence, one of them was school violence, and really effective strategies for combating and responding to school violence. The other one was about bullying, our second keynote speaker, and it was Jay Richard Knapp, who is actually the former president of COSA, longtime Oregon school administrator, who has co-founded an organization that is called Stop Bullies. You can find it, stopbullies.com, they have a lot of information about bullying, and, you know, the root causes of bullying, how we can work to address this as a society, and very, very good stuff, so.
Good, thank you, David.
Yeah.
I wanted to throw in real quick, I got a chance to go up to Mark Twain and visit a few, a couple weeks ago, I guess, and I happened to go the day after that whole incident up there. And first off, kudos to the staff up there for how that whole thing was handled. They, I was there the next day, and if there was any anxiety from anybody, I didn't see it. So, they did it, I know they did a really good job, Dandy and all the staff up there, I think they did a really good job in keeping the kids, you know, at bay, or keeping the kids where they should be and everything. But, just some really neat things. Mark Twain is just doing really well, it seems like. It's always fun to go to Mr. Jamps's science classes and see what he's doing, and Mr. Guptel does some amazing things with his social studies, getting the kids, making videos of things they've been studying, and news, I set it up as news reports and things, and you could tell the kids were really getting into that, and I know that helps them remember the stuff they've been learning. And just Mrs. Garlandhouse's math, I never understand what she's talking about, but they're just doing a really good job up there, a lot of good teaching, you know, some anxiety about the Common Core that some teachers were sharing with me, and, you know, that's pretty common to have, I think, and that'll all get worked out, but just, I've just noticed a difference in the last few years in Mark Twain, how it's just going smoothly, the staff seems really united, and it's a good place to be, I think, a good place for our junior high kids to be, so. Anything else? I just want to throw out real quick on the board reports. One thing that I'd like to see come out of this is sharing, just if you hear any, hear positive things going on in the district and in the schools, don't be afraid to come here and share them at the board meetings, because we can't, we got to pat ourselves on the back and pat our, you know, pat our district on the back, because we have a lot of good things going on. So, you know, keep your ears open for positive things going on out there, and bring them and share, small or big, it doesn't matter, so, just a little plug for that. Okay, correspondence? I don't think we had any, did we, Andy? Second audience with visitors? Anybody? Okay. Most of our audience isn't even listening anymore. They're still talking. Moving on to action items. The first one, approve the financial audit report for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Tom, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. On the Oregon School Boards Association election, we're going to take these one at a time. Board position two, David Beeson from our own district, is there a motion?
I'm motion.
Move to not elect David is?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Second?
Julie Second.
All in favor?
Discussion.
Oh, a discussion. Did you want to say something, David?
I do, can I? If you wonder what's going on here, I left my reading glasses at home, and Mr. Stadley has kindly consented to let me use his glasses, which I think are prescription, are giving me a headache, even in small doses, but I just wanted to say that, in my service as a school board member since nineteen ninety-three, and sometimes serving concurrently on two boards at the same time, I have been a relentless advocate for increased funding for public education. And I state in my, and I want this in the record, in my questionnaire that the- And I state in my, and I want this in the record, in my questionnaire, that the perennial and unresolved issue is the achievement of a mechanism which provides stable and adequate funding for Oregon public education. I don't think that you're going to find any school administrators, any school staff at any level, and very few board members in the state of Oregon who do not believe that we need more funding for public education. The big problem, the biggest problem that we have is money. And, you know, we've been on a roller coaster ride for as long as I have served on public school boards, and at some point, we need to stop the roller coaster and level things out and have stable and adequate funding. Adequate especially, and we're not there yet. The Oregon School Boards Association works very hard for increased funding every biennium, and now every annual legislative session. We achieve that in a variety of ways. It doesn't mean that we're asking for increases in taxes. If you look at the last legislative session, we saved school districts hundreds of millions of dollars by addressing the PERS issue and seeking reform, so that PERS liability for school districts was reduced. We've also worked to reduce mandates, to eliminate mandates that are unfunded, and that's a, that's a program that we will continue. And we will advocate for higher taxes where it's appropriate. So that's my, that's my soapbox for me tonight. All right.
Thank you, David. It's been moved and seconded to elect David as our representative for our district on the OSBA board. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, moving on, for the Legislative Policy Committee Regional Member, Nancy McMorris Adix, Salem Kaiser School District. Is there a motion to elect her to that position?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Moved in second, and all in favor?
Discussion.
So discussion? Sorry, David.
Well, that's okay. Wally expressed some reservations, because she states, I see in her questionnaire a number of times, that she's in favor of funding, increased funding, 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 funding. I just want to refer to what I just said a few minutes ago. You're not going to find very many people involved in public education in Oregon who don't advocate for increased funding.
So what I interpret her argument there is, is more and more taxes, rather than getting a larger piece of the existing pie, and, and reducing mandates, just like, just like you referenced.
But I don't see that in her questionnaire, Wally. I mean, I don't see where she advocates for higher taxes.
She doesn't say, state that directly, but she doesn't state any of the things you mentioned, such as reducing mandates and PERS and those type of things, to reduce the financial overhead that, that schools have to deal with.
Well, you can interpret that any way that you want, but I certainly would advocate for higher taxes.
And in addition, she, she advocates to expand the scope of our school districts and the, and the Oregon School Board Association is a primary advocate for of K-12 education.
Well, the P through 20 proposition, I guess you could call it, is something that's been in the works for a long time. It's not necessarily more expensive, it's not necessarily an expansion of existing programs, but the idea is to break down silos between K-12, community colleges, higher education, and to help on the other end at the beginning, to help students that really need help before they come into the system. But breaking down the silos is something that we've seen ongoing in increments, and I think we see evidence of that in our own school district, where you have increasing numbers of students graduating early, taking advantage of the community college offerings, getting kind of a leg up on college by being able to participate with the community college in programs that give them college credit before they actually leave the high school. The whole idea is, is to make us, I think the governor calls it a seamless transition, along with many others. And so that's really what that's about. It might actually save the government money, it certainly saves individual families and students' money. So I don't see that as an expansion, but rather a reform that breaks down silos and makes the transition from institutional realm to institutional realm much smoother.
Any more discussion?
Okay, we have a motion to elect, that our board voted for Nancy McMorris Adix for Legislative Policy Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, it passes. And the last one, Resolution Number One for, from OSBA, is there a motion for this one?
Move for approval.
Second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I don't have any discussion for this one.
No discussion on this one?
It's sort of a housekeeping.
Any discussion?
Housekeeping.
Okay, all in favor of approval of Resolution Number One?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it passes also. Okay, and with no, no further business, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Dave.